Offer support, different counties, different, uh, different entities, different church organizations, um, the Baptist Association, there were different churches that came in. Mr. Jenkins was there every step, trying to help cut people out, um, so they, you know, they couldn't even get out of the road, so there were so many people, um, that helped. Of course, Casey Swift, what he did in the middle of the night, they were out cutting, and he even called in T-Dot. And, um, I made a call, and we talked to Mayor Matisse, and said, uh, he didn't blink an eye. He said, "Mayor, what do you need?" He said, "We'll take care of it." He had crews there, that, uh, cutting, pulling, uh, they had a fire department, Chief Price, um, so many guys, uh, from the road crews in the city, and the mayor was there every day to help. It, it's, it's unbelievable what happened. So much better, it looks better now, but, uh, but you just couldn't realize what happened. So Mayor Matisse, if you're here, sir, thank you, sir, and, uh, Chris, we, uh, we have supplies and supplies, and was there every day, and we really appreciate that. I know, I know what the people do there. Uh, we did a food drive in Middleton, and then took the food on over to Grand Junction, and, uh, but a lot of people were affected throughout the county, and, uh, our prayers, continued prayers are with them, Sheriff Dill, and thank you, sir. Right there, every step of the way, and I've had a command center there, state troopers, so many people, but, uh, but it, it took everybody working together. And I told this last night to the city council, I said, uh, "We're all on the same team, guys. We're all hard in county. We live here. This is our home." And so it was good to see everybody come together, so, thank you, and I'll, uh, we'll move on now. At this time, I'll need a motion, um, on the agenda. Uh, well, I said, Kristin, if you may, I was about, you want to go ahead and, let's go ahead and do yours, if you would, please. Doctor Smith.
First of all, we'll just explain it, talk about everything we talked about. Thank you, Casey, thank you. About four thirty, of course, we had no cell service anywhere, I decided to come to Ball over to see if I could get some, and the minute I get the spot where the vacation would happen, the sheriff was calling. He said, "Are you happy to go?" No. So, huge help from Sheriff Dill and the whole Sheriff Department, Highway Department making sure buses could get through because Grand Junction was, um, it was difficult, it was very difficult.
I just want to add something, Kristin. We couldn't get to the, the Grand Junction school.
We had no idea.
So, she asked, is the school still standing? So we sent that drone to the school, and the school suffered no doubt. Well, we still couldn't get to it.
That was the next day, so we had no, we were, we had a lot of planes, because we really had no idea what we were going to face. Um, Bob, Eric, and the authority, Tony was on that, immediately got us there, we got in by Saturday afternoon, it was absolutely amazing. But the amazing part, and the blessed part, was that when we got in that school Saturday, and they got to it, we did not even have water. We had, we had one lane down, and that was it. And it was really close to that school. Um, the only thing we did have to do was throw all, move it out, it was in the refrigerators and refrigerators, and that was it. Our community's school set in, grabbed all the kids that Tuesday, so they could go back. But the other thing that speaks to the community, the county, and the community agency, is when we opened schools on Tuesday, we figured we would have several students absent, with thirteen kids absent right now. So the normalcy is with them, um, I think faith was appreciated, and the fact that the kids can get back, and they, that's a safe place to do, so, um, just amazing resilience that came out of that storm. Thank you, Mayor, thank you all, the agency, and I'll just get through that. Uh, speaking of buildings, we did not have any damage in Middleton either, which was amazing. We also are going to have an open house for some of the projects, the larger projects we've been doing, we'll keep that information to you, but we want to welcome you to come and look at the camps, in particular, Middleton High School, Ballard Central High School, Ball Road Marys, we'll push that information soon. I did give you a sheet of two amendments that we have, these are relatively simple and not, the first one is the, the town CBA grants for construction materials and supplies. This was a grant that St. Asane and Mr. Randy Gackham applied for, for their seal programs, and were awarded those, um, grants, so they would flow out from us, and they reimbursed those CBA grants. Um, the next one is for buses. I'm going to explain how we got here, because it's been, as you know, the block chains are not in good shape, steel up and painted, and buses are very hard to find. We had two buses that we ordered in two thousand and three with Esra funds. Twenty-four months later, we didn't have those buses. Esra was gone, we could not use the money, we had to budget that for this year, it's been in the budget. We also had two spare buses that we had to put in the bus, the budget because of rotation. So that's the five eighty-five that you see that's been in our budget the whole year. We also found out that those buses came in, twenty-six months later, we ordered one about eighteen months ago for this year. So we had that when it came in about two months ago. When it came in, the bus company explained to us that they had two more that they could hold for us if we wanted. And that after this year, after this summer, buses were probably going to hit over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're looking at twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar increase. So we decided to go ahead and purchase two, those, two of those buses for a total of three, for one budget purposes, but also, we're in a rotation, so that's on track to not have to purchase ten buses in a year, which was just like what we were on. So helps us get out of that, so we're asking you to purchase those two buses out of our fund balance for a total of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So that'll be the limits for that. Any questions on those?
Move budget number B approved. Motion's been made and settled. It's in discussion, or the motion, or the no. Now, Madam Kirk, we need a call here for this, please. All right, we'll begin, sir. Good, please.
Lucker?
Yes.
Lee Beer?
Yes.
Yellman?
Yes.
Yellman?
Yes.
Gratham?
Yes.
Island?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lemire?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Queens?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Doctor Smith. All right. Casey's going to come on, and you go.
Good evening, Commissioner. I've got two things, Mike, and I'll be quick and tell you guys. First one is, uh, what are the bid specs, are yearly bid specs for the, all the materials we use throughout here? Uh, we have a big handbook if you want to go through it, look at it, if you have any questions on it, feel free to ask, but nothing's really changed, other than just bid specs and bidding here, year after year after year. I just need a motion to approve bid specs, I get them out and have them out in the bids.
So move. Motion's been made and settled. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please, say your final statement. Uh, all opposed, like so.
Thank you all. The second thing I have, uh, we did out a painting project for this upcoming year, uh, bid spec, I don't know if you have it, there was one on the back of this page, I'll hope you all have it or not yet. Okay, uh, the, when we did it out, my board has already warned it to Arrow Haven, and we thank, I'm praying to you guys to get verified, verification on that, to approve the, the contract, go to Arrow Haven. We've been out virgin material, and, uh, there was lowest bid on the virgin material. Now, we'll see two standard instructions, one was for rap, one for virgin. The rap, we wanted to bid, of course, it was just a little cheap on the rap, the way the specs that we did out, so that's why my board decided to go to Arrow Haven. Arrow Haven had the lowest bid of one ninety, one hundred and nine hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, on the virgin.
Just question, what's there for virgin and rap?
Rap is recycled asphalt, so it's, uh, like the millions we got off, uh, we got off of one twenty-five, standard comes back in, and you can only add twenty-five, the max, twenty-five percent of that to you asphalt, for production for the contract. Now, it's not designed, so it's not really, I mean, it's still a design, it's just a virgin material, all virgin, not any rap, and recycled asphalt. And taking recycled asphalt, getting a part of your AC content from it, so you can kind of cut your AC content back by using rap. Just saves money by using recycled material. But we, we use a lot of virgin, here, my board wanting to go with virgin on a couple of projects, trying to compare what, the difference in the county. We've been, standard's been using rap on a lot of our projects until last year, I studied it on Lake Arden, Hound Chapel, and Lake Arden, we're all virgin asphalt, so we're going to see what the, the difference are.
What was this at, one twenty-five, more, more percent?
That was a double, my, double two to C, it was something ERI, um, seven six. Yeah, it's.
They're going to do you.
No, I mean, I had a lot of complaints, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's bare minimum road, yeah.
Yeah, it's bare minimum, but they've done a lot of this stuff, like, uh, Phil State from Wyckel on sixty-four to, from right out, uh, Ford Company to Wyckel, that's a double micro. So what they, it's the same concept as what was on, uh, asphalt, and I always said they used micro material instead of, um, number eight on. So it, it turned out pretty decent, but it's not like that, double chips, and they didn't come back in with a micro, so it's fine to do that surface. So that's why I advise them, they didn't fill in the cracks, basically, they didn't have the smog to fill in the crack.
Yeah, fine, right.
All right, Casey, you have anything?
I need, I need to make sure to approve this, so we can warn the bid.
So move. Yeah. Second. Madam Kirk, you have that, Kirk, the second. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please, say your final statement. All opposed, like so.
I've got, uh, they're supposed to start with, uh, project coming through Baller. They've got a nine, T-Dot's been a nine mile project. They're going to build up everything from, uh, Davis Way to Walton Road. So they're going to get downtown Baller, they've already started, they've already done on the sidewalk through Baller, and I hadn't heard them building stuff back again, they had a pre-con meeting this past week, I, I need to go, I was covered up with storm damage and stuff, so, but, uh, they're supposed to start beginning of summer, so I don't know, it's Saturday, but.
Yeah, I was going to ask you when.
So it's going to kind of put a bearing on a lot of people, a little hardship on a lot of people.
Yeah, it is. Okay.
Thank you. Hey, I got a question, update on, update on some of these roads.
We've got all, two roads open, we've got, uh, we opened up Smalley Road, where it's a pipe, Young Road, we should be doing it tomorrow, we had to close Rocky Springs Road because of, uh, T-Dot inspection, had two cap seals that were rotten, so, I mean, it's not going to fall in, but it's, it's in poor condition, so we have to keep that open before we can go and bridge that up. There's a lot of people don't understand, with T-Dot, since you need to close a bridge, you only have ten days to close it. And if you don't close within ten days, or if somebody comes in, moves it, and have you closed, it's a ten thousand dollar fine to the county, so. We got to make sure we get that closed the, the right way, so we don't get too bad in that.
Well, ten, fifteen inches, we're just saying that, that it would rain at one time, but.
We, we got around fourteen, something, fourteen, a little fourteen inches, those forty-eight, so. But we had, uh, we didn't have anything to totally just wipe out, we had a lot of wash places on the side of the road, so we were able to open the road back up fairly quickly. We've got some, we're wa, we're looking at a lot of the places that are constantly doing this every year, or every time it's getting a hard rain, so we're going to try to armor some of the stuff a little better, and look at some situations where we might need to add a pipe here, or, or a water. The amount of water we got, it don't happen very often, so, a hedge was already full, and then we just got, it was fourteen inches of water, so it didn't have anywhere to go, so, a lot of places backing up, just kept washing out. Somebody asked me, I heard about Lake Arden Road, we had an eight foot pipe in there, it was completely full of marble on the road, that's what the water was going to manage on different places, so, it was just a massive amount of water.
Thank you for all you have, hearing all that.
Yeah, yeah, hey, man, we, county come together that night, I told them that we came, so I'm proud of that.
Any of these, uh, take road?
Take road.
Take road, that's the city of Ballers, but yes, I said, Darren and me were still working on it.
Go ahead, go ahead. I think we let them, kind of help them a little bit, but they need anything, we're more than happy to stand.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question, Casey.
What's that?
Uh, Irman Road in Whiteville, is it state, or is that?
You say Irman?
Irman Road in Whiteville.
Oh, Irman Road, that's, that's county road.
Okay, um, some of the residents, uh, well, Wallace Chapel.
Or Intra, okay. That's off the main enough.
Okay, um, it was brought to our attention that, you know, like, when they have funeral services, it's very difficult for the, uh, funeral, the morticians and everybody to get down there, you know, because the, the church is right there, and then you got to go on another road, so.
Well, the church, the Grand Road, Trump's have a church too.
Right, right, you know, it's going all the way around, and they were saying, uh, some of the members and community, uh, members and staff were saying that it's very difficult to get down there, the morticians and, and, you know.
Yeah, the, the road was being a little road shaker, we hadn't made it around to that section yet, but, um, Charlie Nancy's worked with me, or, or we worked with him, he contacted me like a week before, I think it was his nephew that passed away, trying to get down to, you know, and.
Right, about, about three weeks ago.
Yeah, 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 and they contacted me that week, and I got up the next day, and we got it fixed, so.
Okay, so you got it ready, okay.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Okay, okay, I understand, okay.
Does anybody have a question?
So we have, like, my area, like, Texas Station Road, Cold War Road, Green Road, that's halfway west, it's just going to take time, what I'm telling the neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're, we're moving as fast as we can, I'm, my, my guys work from Wednesday nights to Sunday afternoon, and I finally told, I mean, they kind of rotate the shift, I didn't let them all work that long period, extended period, but we kind of calling in and out, calling in and out, but we have been constantly working on, but then, we have got, I had two notebook pieces of paper, just full road, there's something that was damaged, done to them, so we, we probably got one sheet, we'll have to do it or call a second sheet, this can, the second sheet's just a small saw. But anytime we have something, that I try to get to where the most populated areas are first, because, you know, fix a Grand Road out, one person moves, on beginning of the way, it's faster, I'm not worried about that until we get the populated areas, so, so, everybody bear with us, we're trying to get to plenty, but a lot of material, uh, a lot of stuff, haulings, trucks and stuff, moving along, but we're getting, we're getting it out, my guys are working.
That's what I told, be patient.
Yeah, be patient, I'm proud of my guys, they're doing a really good job, and.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Casey.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, Ms. Adams, I saw you again, would, uh, would you like to say anything about work coming next, anything?
I was just getting ready.
Okay, getting ready, getting ready. All right, if, if no other officials at this time, uh, Ms. Minus, do you have anything? Okay, then, uh, I'd like to have a motion that we're moving to, uh, we need to have a public hearing on a couple of issues, and if there's a motion, we can get to move into a public hearing.
So move.
Second. Motion's been made and settled, we move into a public hearing and discussion. All right, all those in favor, say your final statement. All opposed? All right, we're now in public hearing, and, uh, Mr. Kirk, a few people, please, we have a couple of things.
Yeah, a couple of resolutions, we'd like you guys to decide on Forest Hunt, get any commissions. The first is the accessory building resolution, we're wanting to amend chapter three, uh, currently, uh, you cannot have an accessory building of any kind in the front of your house, before the front of your house. Uh, that, believe it or not, houses are a lot more easier to realize for people, especially in the more hilly areas of the county, because they are very limited, where they can put their buildings, uh, in their house. So this will allow anybody who has an acre or more of property, uh, to be able to put that in front of the house, as long as it still needs setback requirements, they can, they obviously can, uh, violate the setback requirements from, from the road, for that property, as well as, uh, how close it is to their principal building. For most people, the principal building is their house, obviously. Uh, the, there is a positive recommendation on this resolution, both the Baller Municipal Planning Commission, as well as the Department of County, uh, Planning Commission.
All right, are there any, any questions? And then for Mr. Kirk, and then we'll, uh, we have one person signed up for a public hearing, and has any questions for Mr. Kirk? All right, if not, we have our first person who'd like to speak, and our one person here, uh, Ms. Lemire.
Yeah, that was in regard.
Okay, now, Karen, you're on, uh, you're on Block Church, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, got you, got you, my apologies, you'll be on the next one, okay? Our accessory building. All right, is anybody?
accessory building, I mean, what's the dimensions of this? Just curious, I mean, is it ten by ten, boardable building, uh?
It can be anything. I mean, a barn is considered an accessory building, so it can be anywhere from ten by ten to forty by eighty, the main, you know. We don't have a, a set definition as far as, an accessory building can find anything other than the print specs alone.
So it'll be the car, uh, carport.
Correct.
Like it had.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, if not, we're going to take a motion to excel.
I'll accept.
Motion's been made, is your second on?
We're a public hearing.
We're a public hearing.
Okay. Anybody else?
We had to go back in session, we didn't go back in.
Back session, anybody else on there? Okay, let's move on to the next one.
Okay. The next one is, um, a resolution to rezoom, uh, a current property that's, is owned as FAR, to C two, and that's at Church Block Road in Puckett, uh, Highway Fifty-seventh. Currently, it is the old, kind of hostile church that was in Puckett, uh, we've had a company that's coming in to block that property, and they'd like to turn it into storage units, uh, for that area. It does have a positive recommendation from the, uh, Department of County Planning Commission, that that be allowed.
Now, are they going to use the church, or are they going to add it?
No, that's, from what I understand, Ms. Lemire, maybe I'll speak to that better, but from what I understand, they're just using, they're just going to re, re-keep it inside of the church, not adding it to the property, it's, uh.
All right, I'll call it up this morning, now I'm going to read it for you, Block Church, all right, well.
I brought up a copy of the document that needed to be shared. It was I get my work, it's a different name. I'm sorry. I know a lot of people, but for those who don't know me, I'm Karen Lemire, and I'm a real estate broker for Linear Realty in Middleton. Um, I had an investor, and this is kind of outlined in this, but I'll just go over a few things, and then you can ask us in a way, if you have anything. Uh, I had an investor that called me, he had already bought this property that they're talking about, and he was just asking my opinion, you know, what he should do with it, and he didn't know if he should just, you know, clean it up, and just sell it to someone else and make a little bit of profit, or what, but what it's used for right now is, nothing's in it, but right before, I guess in the last five years, it's the church, and then there's the parsonage that is actually built onto the church, and so that was being rent out. So as you can imagine, it's a lot of junk, a lot of different things sitting around. So, you know, we were just, you know, throwing some ideas out there, and I have some storage units in Middleton, which mine are regular storage units, they're not climate controlled. But, you know, I've been kind of looking, which gets some things like that, kind of gets my ideas in your head, and so I was thinking, you know, do some climate controlled storage units, because I had like twenty units, and they're full all the time, but people are constantly calling, wanting to know if I've got units to rent, and wanting climate control. So I just kind of threw that idea at the investor, and he's like, "Yeah, see, you know, see what they say, and, you know, we'll go with whatever." And so we went to the zoning committee, and, you know, they gave us the privilege to come to you guys and talk, but the idea is, you know, we haven't had an architect draw up anything out yet, just for the fact that, that's a lot of money, and, you know, wanting to see what you guys think first, but the footprint of the building will stay exactly the same, okay? And you can kind of, look, I should put the picture of what it looks like now, because I just kind of did this, this was just me, you know, you're typing the footprint that was off the patch map, and putting some units in there, and the outside is painted all in color, it's got a big parking lot, and if you've seen the property, it's a hundred percent better than seeing something like this, and this was just something that I did, you know, quickly, to just get an idea of, of you guys, because sometimes people can see things in their head, what it's going to look like, and other people have to have a picture of it. But, you know, I think it's a good idea, just because I have people coming all the time, and be a good use of that space, because right now, you know, I've got some people here from Puckett that, you know, they're all for it, because there's a lot of properties that are in disrepair, you know, and it just looks really bad, and just kind of falling in, and, you know, but it's, you know, appreciate you letting us talk about this, and, you know, giving your thoughts, and see what you want to do, and if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Do you have your folks here that are in favor? All right. All right. All right, I think that's good. All right. Thank you, good, thank you, anybody have any, any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kirk, appreciate it. All right. Please go back into regular session.
Second.
Motion's been made and settled, we move back into regular session and discussion. All right, all those in favor, say your final statement. All opposed? All right, we're now back in regular session. We need to take these individually, vote on these, for the, uh.
Make a motion, and we accept this, uh, accessory building.
Session, really.
Or left.
Second. All right, motion's been made and settled, for the member, for this accessory building. Any discussion? All right, and, uh, and Kirk, we do a rule on that. All right, all those in favor, please, say your final statement. All opposed? All right, this is passing, all right, let's move into Block Church. Your motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and settled, to approve, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please, say your final statement. All opposed, like so? Motion carried. Thank you, Professor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Thank you, Mr. Minus. All right. Sheriff, did you have anything for the, uh, living racks?
Yeah, well, I can give you all three, but I think, uh, uh, March's total was thirty thousand, two hundred and forty pounds, April's total was six hundred and eighty pounds, of course, we've had, uh, inmates out in Grand Junction, so that kind of, uh, got in, in the way that, and for the year, uh, is a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and eighty pounds of crap, that's off campus.
I appreciate letting all these guys come back. I see a picture, I love that.
I was working, they got to work.
Thank you, Sheriff, thank you, Sheriff. All right, Commissioner Lake, the peer board?
Yes, um, the only thing that I have is that the peer board, we met on March the twenty-seventh, and, uh, had this brief discussion, where it had, um, resident had came to us and the pure, uh, coal press will have, it has been in place, Tennessee coal, uh, and it has been in place for years, and it's currently two thousand feet for churches and schools, and prompted, it was five hundred, and so now we have, uh, some residential places where they want to ask if we change it, but I know we can't go into discussion and everything, uh, tonight, because it want to be changed to, you know, it being revision, to one hundred residential and five hundred with, uh, the churches. So, we wanted to bring it to the, uh, government body commissioners, so that you all know what has been presented to us, and then you know that we had to have, uh, open public announcement in the, uh, papers for everybody to see, so if there's, if anything, uh, anyone disposes, bring it to us, you know, so that everybody can speak, uh, freely about it. And Commissioner Williamson, Commissioner Brad, Commissioner Wright, do y'all have anything else to add with that?
I don't think so, I mean, we, you know, the places, which, you know, we're talking about changing the rules for the whole county, but, uh, you know, the particular place, uh, you know, all the people were, most of the people that we've talked to so far have been in favor of it, uh, because it's, uh, you know, real close, two thousand feet, I mean, that's, that's almost a half mile, and, uh, it's different than the city of Baller, you know, they, they shorten it to there, to those distances, so I think it would be fair enough to do it in camp, but, uh, you know. But, uh, you know, again, just consider it, we'll, uh, have our open hearing and...
Yeah, we'll have to schedule that for a public hearing as well, just like we did tonight for the other two. Brand's hearing.
Uh, basically, the commissioners, we just want to align with all the other counties that's around us that's already, uh, adopted, uh, guidelines of five hundred and a hundred feet for the, uh, sale of the beer total.
Cause we know we can't do it just for one particular area, it's, uh, Commissioner Williams said it has to be countywide, and you know, this room, we have to open it up to everyone, so anyone opposed, uh, whatever their thoughts are, we, you know, we want to hear their thoughts. Cause we are here for the county, not for ourselves, and we want everybody to be pleased on the sign report.
Commissioner Leder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, budget meeting met tonight prior to, uh, Commissioner Beattie at five thirty, uh, you've got the budget amendments in your packet. Uh, we also had a working session, uh, on our budget, if anybody wants to make a note, we are going to have a budget meeting Thursday, May the eighth, at five thirty. Just to, uh, try and finalize everything, maybe meet with a few department heads, and, uh, we're on schedule to have a first reading in, in May, which is a good thing. Keep Ms. Linda from the mayor's office in the prayers, she's having a hip replacement in the morning, so keep her in the prayers, she's done a great job up to this point. And hopefully she'll have a speedy recovery, and we'll be listening to it, so. Uh, in your packet, budget amendments twelve through eighteen were approved by the budget committee with no need to cover the full commission. Uh, we'll start with one, go one through eleven at nineteen, and take questions as we go. Uh, number one, sheriff's department, debiting the fund balance fifty eight thousand, one thirty nine, crediting, uh, vehicles fifty eight, one thirty nine, and this is for, uh, insurance money for the sheriff's Tahoe. And for those who don't know, thankfully, sheriff was in a home in an accident in a storm, again, thanks for all that here. Uh, number two, Harvard County Sheriff's Office, debiting the sheriff's retirement fund forty four thousand, sixty two dollars, ninety two cents, crediting vehicle repair and maintenance, forty four, zero, sixty two, ninety two. And that is for, uh, the installation of radios and lights on three new Tahos for sheriff's department. Number three, other public safety, uh, debiting fund balance two million, one hundred and forty one thousand and ninety dollars, crediting plaintiffs one million, sixty eight thousand, seventeen dollars. Social Security sixty six thousand, two eighteen, state retirement eighty one thousand, four twenty one, Medicare fifteen thousand, four eighty seven, and other charges nine hundred, nine thousand, nine hundred and forty seven dollars. This is, uh, the lawsuit payouts, both the W two and ten ninety nine payments. Uh, number four, with a correction, uh, the ambulance department, debiting the fund balance, the correct amount is two hundred and fifty four thousand, nine twenty. And this crediting attendance, a hundred and twenty five thousand, overtime, a hundred and six thousand, three hundred, social security, eleven thousand, twenty, state retirement, ten thousand. And then the correction on the credit side, crediting Medicare twenty six hundred versus twenty six thousand credit. That's for a debited balance of two hundred and fifty four thousand, nine twenty. And some questions were asked in the meeting on this one, this is not, uh, raises or anything of that type nature, um, Jamie has filled some positions that weren't, uh, in the budget to begin with, for him to be fully staffed. And he says he is one person for being fully staffed, he's at twenty three. Any questions? Number five, land purchase, debiting fund balance seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty eight dollars and ninety nine cents, crediting land purchase seventeen thousand, seven fifty eight, ninety nine. Uh, that's our cost for the land that nobody bought at the mayor's sale, but it did, we'll bring revenues of forty thousand. Number six, other economic development, uh, debiting fund balance four thousand, crediting other contracted services four thousand, and this is more, uh, pass through money on the Grand Valley project. Number seven, sheriff's department, uh, debiting fund balance six thousand, nine hundred, crediting salary supplements, six thousand, nine hundred. Reasoning on the ride, can't receive thirty five, three hundred for salary supplements rather than the twenty eight, four, uh, that was budgeted. Uh, number eight, juvenile services, debiting fund balance four thousand, three hundred, crediting travel, three, three hundred, and other contracted services, uh, four thousand. And that's moving money into line items with shortfall in that, in juvenile services. Number nine, general sessions, debiting fund balance two thousand, three hundred, crediting dues of membership, six hundred, and travel, one thousand, seven hundred. Uh, that's the same thing, moving monies in the deed accounts and shortfalls that pay for the judges. Number ten, circuit court, debiting clerical personnel, fifteen thousand, crediting jury witness expense, ten thousand, deputies, four thousand, and office equipment, one thousand, for a debited balance of fifteen thousand. Uh, this is line item transfers, but, uh, since it had to come through full commission because of clerical personnel, that is within that question. Uh, number eleven, debiting this airport, debiting building improvements, eighty two thousand, eight forty, crediting fund balance eighty two thousand, eight forty. And that's us getting the, uh, grant money back for the airport improvements after we had spent. And then lastly, uh, nineteen, sheriff's office, debiting, debiting, uh, deputy pay line, eleven thousand, two fifty, crediting tow-in services, eleven thousand, two fifty, and your reasoning on the ride. Uh, to pay tow-in services for paying regarding case number as stated. And that is line, line item transfer, but from salary line. Any other questions on one through eleven or nineteen?
Uh, Commissioner, I need your prepared.
Okay, we got you. Go ahead, Mr. Furball.
Go ahead.
I have a question on number three.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I thought we were doing that over a period of time, or was this a one-time thing?
It is a one-time, okay, it's, um, yeah, the, uh, the debit amount is the total amount, your credit amounts are broken down, whether it was social security retirement, Medicare, that's kind of broken down in two ways. And then the other charges amount of that are against the ten ninety nine. And it's, it's... Mr. Buffett?
It was made, Commissioner, uh, back on number four there of the ambulance department, of course, it's under my assumption that overtime is starting to go down. Uh, I know the attendees, uh, line item there, attendance, I, I know that's going to be up because of easy increase in, in orders. But what about the overtime, I guess that follows suit as well, but, I mean, is that just true up, up to date?
Ms. Linda did say, uh, that's supposed to carry us through the end of the year.
Okay, I was my next question, yes.
Is that one oh six, three hundred supposed to carry us through the end of the year?
Okay, my, fair.
Commissioner, they're on track for about two point four for their revenue.
Yeah.
Cause part of that July, that, it's actually incurred in accounting in June, so it will come in, it'll be in July's figures, but it will come in, so that, that's, that's going to account for part of that, so they're on track for right at two point four.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the state amendments? I believe they'll be approved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion been made, the second, to approve, budget amendment, any discussion, please? Same, I'm going to move you to move on, or please, not a card. Buffett?
Yes.
Lee Bear?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Gilliam? Granton?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Linder?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
The same?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, our budget chair, and, uh, vice chair, thank you, sir. And, uh, this meeting, I made that at five thirty. Yes, sir. There, uh, there's things going on with, uh, the penny evaluation, Josh will probably be there, that would be immediately as well, to talk about that, about how the property value and the values are calculated, and how the penny is different than what it was last year. So there's, it's a reduction in the value, and, and we'll, uh, have to go through that, and a lot of things going on with the county with the taxes and so forth, so. Commissioner Miller, would you like to speak on our ambulance service review?
Yes, we met last night, and we, um, sent all the commissioners a copy of the employee manual, so we would just like you all to have that, we would like to look both that. Doesn't need a pool or anything, so it's good, but we just want to make sure you all have that. And I just want to, um, let the mayor know that I did my certification as well, and I would like to ask people to go ahead and get their certification from the class. It's I S nine O eight, I S nine O eight, or P O.
For your children's class, good.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll need to complete that, turn it in, of course, like Karen said, for the holidays, um, in case they all opposed. And, uh, again, as I said, and I want to give you the opportunity real quick, uh, any mayors, I see Mayor, uh, Point Field, did you have anything, Mayor, that was sitting behind you for the area, but you wanted to let the commissioner know?
I don't know anything.
Yeah, thank you. Again, Commissioner Jacob, you can be Mr. Edgar Park, thank you very much for what you did, your team, uh, for cutting people out. I know, uh, Mayor Lane was trapped in his house, there at Grand Junction, couldn't get out, running down different roads, had a tree, and then he actually left his home, um, to go help other people. So appreciate him and Don, of course, Ken, Nate, and Tammy, and all the pastors, Pastor Rita, Pastor Ryan, Pastor Shannon, and Cindy, and that's his church. And, uh, let me give a quick lawsuit update, um, there was an extension given by the courts, um, uh, for the plaintiff's lawyer and ability. And I think he has till April the twenty second to turn in his videos and, uh, to the court system, and then it goes from that point on, for so many days, I think they have, uh, then they have to turn in another filing and so forth. But that's the only update that we have at this time. And is, is there any other business needs to come up before the commission? Mayor, did you make any action over your, your declaration? No, we, uh, uh, we can sign the act, but that, that has to be recorded, it works the declaration. Uh, we did too, of course, but that's, that is supposed to help expedite funding quicker. Uh, of course, we mentioned earlier, the state has that table at the headquarters, and they, Governor Lee's already signed off on it, so it goes up to FEMA. And as soon as they get the last numbers in, like we were talking about tonight, all the numbers that came in, then we had those, uh, those are pre-limbed, I think there's a few more. And what will happen at that point, I want to be very clear, when, when the president signs that, then FEMA and TMA will come in, they'll have a command center. And Darren, if I, if I'm wrong, which, uh, credit or not, they'll have a command center set up in the area. Each of them will, they will be, the TMA, FEMA representatives, uh, they will have, of course, with different deductibles, different people that are underinsured, with different programs that they have. Also, if you have damage to a pay bond, you know, if you use different things within that type of, uh, work, they'll have the Department of Agriculture will be there as well. Red Cross will be there to set up, uh, so we're just waiting on that declaration, uh, from the president. And that will be, um, when that's signed, it'll be on social media, all the representatives at EMA will have that information, it can be spread throughout the county, so everybody affected, Darren has a list, that, that they will be there. So, any other business we have, or Mr. Furball?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, something, I'd like to, you mentioned, the zoning resolutions, uh, have been completely updated, uh, as of March twenty twenty five, and they are now posted on the website. If anybody needs access to that information, it is, it is on the website, the zoning compliance website.
Thank you, sir. Move, move, Karen, I mean, who, who, Commissioner, just a second.
Jamie, Jamie Lee, ambulance care. Cause he, he mentioned Carby retired, they're having a retirement, they drop in type deal for him Thursday, five to eight. And he can deal with our ambulance service, Jamie says, since nineteen seventy six. So I know a lot of you know Harvey, you have a drop in.
What time is that, Commissioner?
Five to eight.
Five to eight.
The Ag Center.
Present.
I said thank you.
All right, yeah, Harvey Mattress, over this time, I think he's got fifty years. All right, any other, we have a motion to adjourn, get your seat.